Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, November 4th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. And first, I want to do a roll call of attendance, starting with Vanessa Price. Round the horn, big horn today.
Vanessa Price, Town Planner.
John Driscoll, Planning Board.
Bob Tessier, Planning Board.
Andy Knapp, Planning Board.
Scott Shepard, Planning Board.
Dan Madzerek.
Tracy Hertakoff.
Joyce Capiello.
Rob Gibson.
Jim Sakosha here. Please all rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, we have agenda review and approval.
We approve the agenda as written.
We have a second?
Yep, second.
Roll call.
Madzerek, aye.
Hertakoff, aye.
Capiello, aye.
Good tonight.
Sakosha, aye. Okay, next on to public comment. There's two public comments in this meeting. Anybody in studio online? No one in studio, no one online. Going to go ahead and close public comment. Public hearing and invited guest. I do not see school board liaison, Rick Walker here. I know the other liaison was not going to make it tonight, so on to the joint meeting with the planning board.
Awesome. Very excited, and I have to say, this is the first joint meeting between the Select Board and Planning Board in my six years in Barrington. I think this is a very important exercise, not just for the topic, main topic for discussion tonight, which is the capital improvement program, but also as we look at a continued effort in implementing the master plan and a more organized approach to zoning amendments, that we bring these two very important and impactful boards in the community together, so we can collectively discuss the future of the town, which is the biggest crossover between the work the Planning Board does, especially with the CIP and proposing zoning amendments, and the work the Select Board does in setting the policy direction for the town. So I'm glad that we're here. We did introductions before. I'm sure everybody has had an opportunity to get to know each other over various involvement. So the very primary purpose that we're here is to discuss the CIP. So this is a product of the Planning Board. So the town planner worked with department heads, got it to a draft phase that was presented to the Planning Board at a meeting in October. Then that product came to the Select Board for review and comment. And so at that meeting, the Select Board reviewed, made comments, and more importantly, established a proposed funding plan for the CIP. How we could accomplish those identified priorities, or I should say, most of those identified priorities. And so that information was kind of sent back to the Planning Board, and Vanessa and I talked about it, and the natural next step would go to the Planning Board for final approval. But I'm glad that there was availability, so we could come together, talk about any of those nuanced questions or concerns that members of the Planning Board have for the Select Board, or staff, or vice versa with the Select Board, in how we encounter items in the capital improvement program that maybe the Select Board has questions or concerns about, but doesn't want to recommend is removed. So we have, and I can put up on the screen as well, the most recent draft copy of the capital improvements program for 2025 to 2035. And that includes, the bread and butter of that is the project tables at the end, which list the projects, provide some details, list the funding, and then layered kind of on top of that is the proposed funding plan. And so from where we are now, I think maybe it would be a good idea to start with Planning Board members in reviewing the feedback from the Select Board, the recommended changes first, and then the funding proposal. Is everybody comfortable starting in that way? Does anybody want to add anything for table setting before we start? Great, fantastic. So Planning Board members, you saw the recommended changes from the Select Board, and I can pull up a summary of those if that would be helpful. Okay. So this was our October 21st meeting. And I have the CIP up right now, but I'm going to switch. This is the Town Administrator Report. We're going to scroll down to capital improvement program. Okay, so the changes, starting right here in one. Would you like me to just kind of speed run them, and you can speak up if you have questions or concerns, members of the Planning Board? Okay, so the first one was to reduce the project scope for Toll End Road. Between last version and the proposed version this time, the Toll End Road project ballooned from $2 million to $6 million, and that project item was to reconstruct the entirety of Toll End Road from 125 to the Dover Line. That's an impractical approach to solving the deficiencies of Toll End Road. That is a project that needs to happen in phases. And so the proposed reduction is to take the first phase, which has always been the replacement of that culvert in that steep ravine. That's the project that is in the CIP right now as Phase 1, and then future phases would happen afterwards. So that's a reduction of that scope. Under B, it's moving a grouping of infrastructure projects from 2025, completion in 2025, to 2026. And this becomes more important as we look at the funding proposal. But what the Select Board has talked about, starting last year about this time, is that to accomplish these very costly infrastructure projects, which we cannot secure outside funding to cover, it will take a bond. But these individual projects like Deer Ridge Road, you never drive on Deer Ridge Road. We ask you to raise over $1 million to improve Deer Ridge Road on a separate warrant. We're not likely to achieve the level of support necessary, 60% to get that bond passed. So what the Select Board has talked about is taking these important and necessary, critical infrastructure projects across town and bundling them together into a bond that is as much as $12 million. So we say to the people that drive on Young Road and across those causeways, and the people that drive on Toll End Road, and the people that drive on Deer Ridge Road, and included in this is the Nippo Brook Culvert out in the west part of town. And so bundling those into one and saying, we all need to make a collective investment in this infrastructure. Now, we won't do all of these projects in one year, but we'll request the bonding authority in one year, and then we'll draw from that bond as we're ready to execute on the projects. And so this was an idea the Select Board had initially to propose for 2025. But after last year's warrant with 41 articles and the library bond and the cost escalation that we've been experiencing, I think the Select Board made the appropriate decision that 2025 isn't the year to do that. In addition, it will give us more time to further the engineering on these projects, make them shovel-ready, line up potentially other funding sources if available. So moving these projects out and bundling them together. Is that recommendation? Pausing for questions.
I just want to confirm. So when we say 2026, that means going before the voters in '26?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the projects wouldn't start until even later once we got the bonding authority?
Correct. Yep, so they would be staggered following the bonding authority. But of course, that bonding authority being the biggest threshold to achieve.
And once we get that bond, do we start paying interest on the whole thing immediately, or does it come?
Excellent question. So that would be bonding authority. We would not draw on a bond any more than we would need. So what we would do, presuming the community supports, say, a $12 million bond, we would borrow $2 million at, so there's bond sales twice a year, the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank. And so we would borrow $2 million as we need it, and of course, we would pay interest on that. But that authority would exist that we could draw from as needed. Gotcha. Good question. Richardson Pond Dam is a project that has been pushed back a couple of times now. Right now, we're waiting for an ecological study, which would help inform us and the easement holder what the impacts of reconstructing or removing the dam would be, to understand if those options are on the table. So we're not prepared to take anything to voters in March of 2025, moving that to a 2026 project with any funding at the March 2026 meeting. Remove new voting machines. The Select Board used unexpended appropriations from the incident fund in 2024 to fund that project, so we don't have to save for it or do that in the future. Public safety design engineering impact fee study. This was identified as still the important first step of a renovation addition to the public safety building. There was not motivation to bring this before voters again after it failed last year. So we're taking a break in 2025, and the proposal would be to bring this back in 2026. Start with a full design, go down the impact fee study road as well, so we could bring a project forward in 2027.
Would it be possible to separate the impact fee part of it into a separate warrant? Okay, because I think a lot of people were confused last year, thinking that fee might have impacted them, not new places.
Excellent point. So let's, we can do this one of two ways. We could collectively, in the benefit of being together as a joint group now, we could discuss that and make that change in this version before we adopt it. I heard similar feedback from folks, and it certainly wouldn't be impossible to separate those initiatives. One would have to be conditioned on the other, right? We wouldn't do the impact fee study if we didn't get the design money, but...
You've done that with the veterans thing, I think, once, right?
Precisely. Is there a thought or opinion, strong feelings of that on the Select Board side?
Do you have discussion?
Okay, so we'll split those out. And one benefit of splitting those out would be the ability to expand the scope of the impact fee study. If at that time, we want to explore impact fee studies for additional purposes, that article could fund multiple, and there are some economies of scale for the impact fee study. Other thoughts or opinions from Planning Board members on that? Okay, Vanessa, will you separate those? Great. And then I'm on F now, which is on the screens, and I can zoom in. So we end up with this in capital planning sometimes, where we know the public safety building needs a roof, but we're also planning to expand or replace the building. And so as an artifact of that, we ended up with both of those projects on the CIP. We don't need to be concurrently planning to replace the roof and replace the building. Option one, the best possible option, is to replace the roof when we replace the building. And so we're consolidating that to just say that the roof replacement is part of the renovation addition project, with the caveat that if we don't get a public safety building renovation addition approved in the next five years, we will need to separately fund a roof replacement.
Is there intention to tear the building down?
Make sure it's turned towards you. The question was the intention to tear it down? No. The proposal, which we'd like to bring to the next level of design, is to do mostly an addition inside the footprint with the addition of a larger Sallyport, but create a second story above the bays on the fireside. So we add square footage, so we take that roof off, lift it up, and have the fireside essentially be the bays and the office in the area square footage above, and the police be able to expand out as far as the dispatch room of the fire station now. So they would have, police would have their training room, where the fire training room is now, and then all of the amenities for the fire and rescue would be above the bays.
Well, we've already, the elevator would have to be continued higher up in the space?
The plan would be that the elevator would serve those floors, so that we would bring that floor, that floor elevation is already high enough. We would need to raise the roof above the bays, but the elevator brings people high enough to have a story above the bays without an additional elevator. Good question.
I wasn't sure if it went. For some reason, I thought the elevator came in lower side of the bay.
Yeah, the ceiling in the bays will be lower, but high enough to accommodate the equipment that we have. Good question, though. Okay, moving on, for the sake of efficiency, move highway addition to rear building out to within seven to 10 years. We have no immediate plans to do that. We have enough garage capacity right now to store all of our plow vehicles in the winter, which is the important part. This is an important part of the CIP, because we anticipate, as we lose outside contractors, we'll need to increase the size of our fleet and do more in-house, either with seasonal staff, but the equipment is the big piece. We'll need to end up with more equipment, we anticipate, and so planning for that now is important, but we don't need to do it within the next six years. And then there was a redundant addition, and this version of the addition was a much larger scope and unnecessary. And so there's a three and a half million dollar garage addition, and that's eliminated in favor of the highway garage or the highway addition to rear building. And then the bicycle pump track was shown as $3 million when it's a $300,000 project. So just reducing that cost.
Just to zero.
Just to zero. So those are the changes to the CIP. So before we move on to any of the funding specifically, how do we feel about those changes? Or were there any items that the Planning Board felt in their discussion warranted further conversation with the Select Board? Please.
Some of them are good. Some of them I just, I struggle with getting to why we're doing. Like when I hear about putting a garage, an addition on the garage, those are areas where I look at, if the plan is to have it so you can store cover trucks, why do we not build a carport off of it? Because you don't need heated storage, you don't need fully enclosed storage. And if you have to work on a truck, you're going to pull it in, you're already heated and controlled garage.
The intent is actually to have it be heated space, so that we're not running into the issues which we are now with the equipment and freezing. So not only the spreading equipment, which seems to be the more problematic, which ends up, we have vehicles coming out of service, and this is mostly the contractors, because their material freezes up when they're outside, so they come in to do a run, they break a chain on the spreader, whatever other equipment failures. And so our goal is to have the vehicles in heated space, stored in heated space.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Isn't the brine solution that we're using, that we're spreading, doesn't that provide some type of protection against freezing?
We don't use a brine solution, so we use all granular, so they're...
What are we treating it with?
Salt. So salt has a lower freezing point, but it doesn't mean that it doesn't freeze. And the introduction, part of the benefit is having it covered, as Andy mentioned. Having it covered to keep moisture out helps make sure that we don't introduce moisture into the salt, creating more opportunity for freezing. That's why obviously we keep our salt covered in the storage bays. But it doesn't mean that it doesn't freeze. It just means it freezes at a lower temperature.
Do you have covers on the back end of the truck? Because if you have salt spreaders, you should have covers on the back of your spreaders.
We don't have covers on any of the six-wheel dump trucks.
So that's something you should be looking at, are covers on your six-wheel trucks?
Yeah, and...
Everybody I know that plows has covers on the back of their spreaders.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't store the trucks with material in the spreaders. So I think that's the difference with the private contractors. They're generally storing with equipment in, so it's much more important that they keep everything out of the inside. When we're done with a weather event, we go dump everything out of the, spread everything out of the hopper, and then put them in storage without any material. But it's those long-duration storms where we're going out, where we're waiting and going. But what I'm hearing, though, for the efficiency of this meeting, we've already said, let's move it to seven to 10 years. But I'm hearing that by the time we get closer, we need to have a lot more meat on the bone and justification for an expansion like that, and that's perfectly warranted. Is there any concern with that? That's the goal anyways. We want to build year over year, so identifying those areas that we want to add details for.
Are we going to talk about the plan for how we do that? Are we going to talk about the plan for how we do that today?
Let's talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a conversation that we can have before we move on to funding. What would be the expectation or hope as we build on these projects? What is missing in general that we can bring to the next version to make it more clear or provide more details?
I'll just say, I think it's a lot to put on the Planning Board to be sort of responsible for, at their level, doing it all along with the rest of the Planning Board job. I was thinking it might be useful to have a subcommittee, yet another, that's working sort of off-cycle, maybe in the springtime of the Planning Board, the Select Board, and ABC, to come together and really to do more of an analysis of this, right? And then that feeds into the budget process come in August, September, and we can move forward. That would be one idea I was thinking of.
What about involving the Budget Committee in that subcommittee?
ABC, yeah.
I think Dan had something.
Dan? Thank you. Thank you, Scott. I'd say we might want to...
Great.
I think one of the difficult things is, you know, and I appreciate that we're trying to be forward-thinking in each and every department that affects the town, affects the town budget. But just like we don't know where the economy is going to be in two years, we don't know whether we're actually going to lose all the privatized road flowers. Is that a word, flowers? Contractors. And so the only thing I'll say is, anything we're moving out to years seven to 20, we just need to be mindful that investing too much right now in time drilling down those details may not be the best use strategically of what future actions may take place.
It's an excellent point, and to build on what Scott said, maybe that's something that we ask that subcommittee in the springtime to evaluate. What level of detail is expected for projects based on how far out we're planning for them? So maybe we're looking for a one-page summary for all projects. But maybe when projects are within the next four years, we're expecting a more detailed cost analysis. We're expecting a more detailed justification for the need for the project that we can use not only to justify to groups like these, but also to the community. That's an excellent idea.
I'll use as an example, your number one thing, study the need to identify appropriate sites for a town cemetery should this one become full. You know, curveball, green burials. We need to figure out how much land we need to set aside if we're going to implement and adopt a green burial process. That's something we probably wouldn't have talked about 18 months ago. So I guess I'm just using that as an example of how we, things will change and flex, and investing too much into, hey, what are we doing in seven years may not be the best.
I think that's valuable to talk about. One of the items that stood out to me is...
Turn the microphone a little bit, sorry.
Yep. One of the items that stood out to me was, when you look at the implementation period, I was really surprised that it extends as far as the next six years. Typically, from a capital investment standpoint, we don't look at anything more than three years out initially, because so much changes in that timeframe. And when you make a commitment to a plan, usually there's a year of planning that's tied to it. Then you've got your capital expense year where, okay, we've got our plan in order, we've secured all our funding, we're ready to go, and then it's a year to build on it. So it tends to be about a three-year process. And right now, there's a lot of technology disruption happening in the market, which is changing so rapidly that if you're trying to plan six years out, you will miss a really great opportunity that's coming, because you're focused only on what you're seeing there.
It's actually a really nice segue to something else I wanted to mention, you know, building again off what Scott had said about convening a group to kind of dive into this a little bit deeper earlier in the year. Something that we could ask that group to look at is what the definition of a capital project is for our purposes, right? We have a relatively antiquated definition at $10,000 in 10 years, right? A lot of things cost $10,000 now. And for the purposes of capital planning, we may want to increase that threshold by quite a bit to make sure, to Tracy's point, we're focusing our energy on the most important projects. But it would also allow for, what you were talking about, Andy, a more detailed focus on the next few years. We're not looking at as many projects, because the definition of a capital project has changed for that purpose. And I think involving the Budget Committee in that would be really helpful also. Scott had some thoughts?
So I think it would be a progressive elaboration, right? So you start looking, I agree, three years out might be the right time. I think the Planning Board is supposed to look by statute at six or more years, I think, so that's why it's on there.
Right. Okay, I learned progressive elaboration as a description of something that as you go on, you get more details. So I'm locking that one, and you'll hear that from me again.
Thank you, Scott.
I was going to move that we strike that comment, because it'll come up.
I'm going to have it on T-shirts soon.
I'd like to suggest, Andy has a really good point when you start really getting into it. But I think we collectively should look a little further out to get a direction going. Three years is a good timeframe for a particular project. But I think we need to continue to look out five, six by statute, but perhaps even longer than that, seven to 10. For me, it's not a big deal. For some of you, it might be a big deal.
Well, when you mentioned that three-year process, how long has that been a thing?
From my experience overseeing facilities and items like that for TurboCam, since I moved into the role, I've done it, and in the 25 years I've been doing capital planning and projects for environmental health and safety projects, things like that.
Well, I was just thinking maybe it might be a little bit longer with the kind of how we came out of COVID and so on and so forth, and what we're at now with gearing back.
So my experience on that has been that the planning process has not changed. I look at my three years as things we know we're going to go execute on. The longer planning is something you do anyway. You have to have longer-range plans. You're just a little more nimble in what they are. The big thing that I've seen out of COVID from a change perspective is the cost of everything.
I think Rob had something, then Tracy.
Rob? Yeah, I was just going to add that, similar to what we did with the strategic planning, this is a living document and looked at real time. And I think that whether it be a joint committee like this, a subcommittee, we should be, at a minimum, every six months or every year, coming together, reviewing where it's at on a yearly basis. So it's not like by statute every six years we're looking at something.
Tracy?
I think the difference I'll point out and the reason that the six years are so necessary is, in a private business, you know where your money's coming from, or you've put that money aside. We're going before voters and allowing all of the residents to decide if and when the money will be spent. And as an example, that $150,000 very needed study for fire and police didn't go through, and now we're into that third year by the time we will actually be presenting it again. So I think the six years in a municipal environment is...
Yeah, but what you might do is, you're going through, it still might always be on your three-year range, right? It gets pushed out at a yearly review.
Right.
Great discussion.
A concept that came from the NHMA Conference recently in capital planning is the idea of Horizon Projects. So a way to separately categorize, you know, like you were talking about, Andy, that you're always doing that long-range planning, you're always anticipating. Maybe to Tracy's point, you're not investing a lot of time and energy on that specific plan, but you're at least putting pen to paper to say, hey, it's possible we lose our private plow contractors. And if we do, these are the things that we need to pay attention to, these are the trickle-down effects that would have. And so maybe, you know, we encourage that potential subcommittee to evaluate some other capital plans with help from staff across the state, figure out how maybe they categorize those different, what are the expected level of detail? So excellent. I like how this has evolved.
I find it very helpful to look at the depreciation of equipment over a much longer period of time. Like some of these we're saying might last 30 years. So that's just really helpful for.
Good point.
Anything less than that long.
Dan, stop throwing that out there. It's morbid. Okay.
So the, the second phase of what the select board did is much more the select board's realm. But I think it's important for the planning board to have an understanding of how the, the select board plans to accomplish this capital plan. And so the funding recommendation, this builds off work that the select board did last year in establishing really the first funding plan for the project. You'll see that most of the funding plan relies on contributions to capital reserve accounts, which we've been doing for decades in this community. And that's a really effective way to set some money aside for these projects. Granted, we won't fund everything, especially those infrastructure projects that way. The other thing that's really important is that these contributions to the capital reserve accounts are not arbitrary. They are based on our anticipated funding needs from the CIP. First one here, dam repair, engineering replacement. We need to add another $200,000 to that pot of money in order to complete the two projects at the Swains Lake Dam that are necessary. After those projects are complete, we don't have immediate capital needs at that facility. And so we should still be saving money for the ongoing needs that arise. But that contribution can go from $200,000 in 2025 to $25,000 in 2026. So moving the needle on that is important. Bridging Culvert Capital Reserve, a lot of that seed money for design and engineering. We talked about the public safety building design, the Richardson Pond Dam. This is a placeholder figuring a $400,000 cost with a 50-50 split with the conservation fund. That will vary, that conversation will very much evolve once we know what we're actually doing. We talked about the, the $13 million bond. Looking at the highway heavy equipment capital reserve, this is another area of good news. Based on the needs identified in the CIP, if we continue to contribute $300,000 in 2025 and 2026, we can reduce that contribution to 150,000. And that 150,000 should sustain the replacement needs in, throughout the entire capital plan, throughout 2035. Now, if we see increased inflation or increased costs, we may need to escalate that, but not back up to $300,000 immediately. We have been aggressive with our equipment replacement and we're reaping those rewards now because we have equipment that will last us and we don't need to replace. We, we're not, we don't have a replacement backlog, I should say. And yeah, so we're talking about additional contributions to capital reserves. The, down at the bottom, there is a new proposed capital reserve for parks and capital improvements for parks. That's going to be proposed this year at $20,000. The select board discussed that at the last meeting. There's also a proposed $150,000 and a new capital reserve for facility maintenance. You'll see for the first time this year, the CIP includes actual facility projects for the facilities in our town. We have not had that previously. It, we have not, we don't have severely deficient buildings in this town in terms of maintenance. But I will tell you confidently that we have not gone about facility maintenance in this community in an organized way in the past. It has been a break-fix approach. Something's not working, we choose that's the right time to replace it. The problem is we end up with the generator at the public safety building, where that machine was so antiquated, so few people even knew how to turn it on, that we have a, we have an emergency event in Barrington and we have to leave behind two people to keep the generator going so that we have power and internet at the public safety building. So we waited too long to replace that. Now fortunately, we replaced that, the new generator's up and running, a huge success story. Point being, we are taking a much more organized approach to facility maintenance. We have a facility maintenance plan and we have funding proposed to fund that plan and doing it in an organized way. And so I give a lot of credit to the facility, working facility manager in leading some of those efforts. But we are in a much better place in this capital plan than even last year's version as it relates to facilities. And there's, there's one item in here using some of the remaining ARPA allotment that the select board has available to address a part of the capital needs. And we have to remember that that's always an opportunity. There, there will be additional funding sources throughout the entire life of this capital plan. And staff paying close attention to those funding opportunities, having the capital planning in place so we can point and say, this is a project that we need, this is available funding. Let's accelerate the, the plan for this and take advantage of the funding. So that's how we plan to pay for most of it. There are some projects, especially recreation projects, which are likely to get funded either from user fees in the revolving fund or potentially from the town center tax increment financing district or those additional funding sources where we wouldn't necessarily ask voters to fund those projects. But if we were able to secure outside funding, those were identified as, as desires in the community.
I'd say that, yeah, what we have here is a, a list of what we want to spend, start to spend or ask voters to spend at a certain period of time. It's not how that money would be used actually over time. And so I think we also need to take that deeper level of analysis and try to figure out what that is so we can project out a tax rate and see what it looks like.
It's an excellent point. And, and I think that's a good topic to add to the work of the subcommittee.
Yeah. And the other thing I would add to them, or somebody, I don't know who, is the socializing of the plan and the cost with the community. I think as is today, if we were to go to the community and say $12 million, there, I mean, first of all, there's a question, okay, you're going to spend $12 million today. No, we're not, right? So how do you begin to communicate that? And I, I think that's going to be a lot, a lot of work and there's going to be a lot of pushback.
I couldn't agree more. And Joyce and I were talking about that recently as it relates to road improvements in the community. And our plan, which even back in the days when Andy was on the select board and developing an updated pavement management plan and how we accomplished that. We, and, and I'll put, I'll be the first person to put my hand up. We recognized our deficiencies in taking the good work that we're doing, the good planning that we're doing, and broadcasting that to the community. And we have been getting by, right? It's, it's difficult to justify changing the approach when we take 41 articles to voters in March. And, you know, we invest a lot of time and energy in educating voters, but we received very significant support from the community. I agree with you that it won't be enough when we start to talk about a $13 million bond. So recognizing that deficiency and, and working as soon as possible, right? And even in the early stages on getting information out will be a, an all-hands effort.
I'm not sure if anyone else read the Carce School analysis of New Hampshire's civic health. But one of the things that Barrington has been much better at than other communities, and every time we go to New Hampshire Municipal Association, they use Barrington as that example. Only 36% of New Hampshireites actually have confidence even in municipal government. So I think Scott's right on. How do we, it's great that all the work is done. You've got the strategic plan, you're looking forward with the CIP. How do you execute it? But more than that, how do you educate the residents within the community of here's the needs and here was the process?
Excellent point.
And from my perspective, I think we should start this year. I don't think it's something that you can do just in a few months' time. And I would say, you know, even the answers where the BCDC is asking about what people might be willing to pay for enhancements to the common. And, you know, we're not giving them the background. There may be a $12 million bond next year. What would you feel then, right? So there, we're getting their input, but they don't, we don't have the, quite the transparency to help people understand what's really coming. And I think we need to start to look at everything that we do with the goal of selling this to people logically and rationally next year.
Excellent point.
I think the item that the board is most challenged with is that there is a very big difference between needs and wants. What does the town need and what does the town want? And the problem is, that I see, is we go after some of these items to have them, which forces it to become a need moving forward because now we're like, we need to replace this. We need to upgrade it. We need to maintain it. We need to manage it. But you don't need to do it if you can live without it and you don't have to go get it. We all have a, have a budget we have to live within, within our personal homes and our personal being. And we all have to live, to make those choices of what are, what we want at our house and what we need. And we need to do the same thing from a community perspective. And it, sometimes it means making the hard decision to say, we really don't need that. We just like to have it. And I've seen a lot of items that honestly look more like wants than needs. And I've, having sat in that seat for six years, I've seen a lot of that come through and I'm looking at it now. And that's a concern that I have.
I think this is our opportunity, if we're seeing that in this CIP, of identifying that at this meeting. So if you're looking at this and you're saying within the next, and, and this is just my perspective, but if you're looking at this and you're saying, okay, I don't really see Richardson's dam as a need. It's held all this time. Is it fluid? Do we want to take a chance on it? What's the impact if the dam fails? Maybe you don't view it as a need, but I think this is our meeting where the opportunity exists for us to say, I view this as a want.
And, and I think, and I've never talked about it, but you know, to me, I, I look at the school budget looking for two data managers. I look at us looking for somebody to help with conservation and some of the other things we're doing. And I, I would say that those are more wants than needs. And I think if we were to go out to people and say, we considered these, we're not doing this because we do realize that, but next year, be aware. I think would be useful for everybody to really give the town confidence that we're not just going wild and then just bringing a bond on them. That's my view.
Also, if people look at this, they'll say, well, actually it's 13 and 25, 25 and then 5 million more, 27.
Right.
18 million. Chop it into sections. Work instead of 13 and 25, there's 6 and 7.
But there are also other things we could do. We could like reduce some of the capital reserves. Do we really need to save for a piece of equipment 10 years from now? Do we just do it now for five? I mean, you can look at it and say, we're not really getting the investment we need, are we? Is our money even keeping up with inflation? If not, you know, maybe it is better to wait for a bond. And maybe the best thing to do is to put more under a bond if we can just draw from it. Because we'll have better interest rates there and, and, you know, so there are different ways to do it. I don't know what's, I'm not trying to say one way is better than another.
The issue with the bond is you have to have identified what that bond is paying. You can't begin to add things to it as you go along. You have to have identified what will the bond be covering.
Right.
And traditionally, in town meeting form of governments, and especially SB2 like Barrington, where there's a 60% required threshold for bonding authority, securing bonding authority from the community is not easy. It's not frequently done on the first try. And so there's a, there is a theoretical argument that the better approach for a community for governance to pay for any capital needs is to bond it. Because the people that are benefiting from that vehicle, facility, are the ones paying for it because it's in the future. Contrary to Barrington's approach, saving cash, none of us in this room may be here when we see that piece of equipment in 10 years, right? In Barrington, here in Barrington. We may have all voted with our feet by then.
Why is everyone looking at me?
Well, remove the mane.
And in Dan's case. So, yeah, that's, that is a, cities do that, right? So that's what the cities do because the city council has bonding authority. Most cities in New Hampshire have bonding authority. And so the city council, you can convince nine or 13 people that that's the smart, financial and good planning approach. It's a lot different when you're trying to convince 60% of the 7,000 registered voters. And so, so, yeah, that's the, how we've evolved into the tradition that we have, not saying it's perfect.
One of the, one of the other comments. Make the idea of what's necessary, what's needed and what is want. Part of, part of what we want and part of what this town needs, we think, is a good place to live. Some of those things require things we don't need. We don't need a pump track, but we sure, that would sure enhance heart, I think. Those are decisions that we have to make that, some of these things, you know, you have a computer, you may not need a library. That library, I think, will be really enhance living in this community. And that's one of the considerations we have to make. Not just, we need 8 million, 8 million dollars, 12 million dollars to replace some road surfaces. There are other things that are, are necessary in a town that are more subjective than they are objective.
What I like about all of this, the TIF and the libraries, people voted. So there's a way we can get people to, I don't know what the mechanism is, to vote on that. Say, yes, we want to do that.
That's, you're right. You're absolutely right. I'm just saying it. A lot of things we consider don't have, hard to put a real, a real solid objective number on some of the things that I think are important for maintaining the town.
Okay, great. So.
I'm not on the cemetery trustees.
So I think we're at the point, and I, I don't want to advance this faster than anybody's ready for, but I think we're to the point where if there aren't additional changes, questions or concerns, I think it would be a good exercise to, to mutually adopt the 2025 to 2035 CIP. And we have a list of, of good feedback that we'll be, bring into the process for next year. And it sounds like maybe even that will start early in next year. And, and so that can advise some of the early stages of the CIP development. So very productive. But is there anything anybody wants to add or rehash before go to adoption?
What about conversations with the school board as far as their, who's having that strategy conversation?
Yeah, so excellent point. So we, we solicit projects from the school board, just like we do departments. But being separate government entities, we don't negotiate with them like we do with department heads or like, like the planning board does. And so, you know, I think maybe something we could take into next year also is trying to set up a joint meeting with maybe the planning board and the school board or maybe bring it into the collaboration committee that we have with the school board, where we're talking about that more specifically because that doesn't happen right now. And Vanessa and I can also do some research in other communities, how they handle that. That's not a problem unique to Barrington. Good question, though.
I'll entertain a motion to finalize and adopt the 2025 to 2035 capital improvements as amended.
And I think we can vote on it collectively if, if folks are on board with that. You will entertain a motion. Who made it? Maybe someone from the planning board made it. Scott made it from the planning board. It was seconded by.
Joyce.
Joyce.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, all in no, say no. Okay, passes.
Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody, for the work on that. And I look forward to next year's process. Are we comfortable building in a joint meeting at the end of the process next year?
Sure.
Okay.
You guys are all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd care to. It's over, isn't it?
Don't worry, we have a long meeting on Wednesday.
I read the agenda.
Love you, Joyce, yeah.
Here, okay.
I nominate Joyce as tribute.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks for coming, guys. Thanks for your volunteerism.
It was voluminous.
Hey, what a great discussion, right?
Absolutely.
I think the most important thing is the town is, you know, growing and looking at the future.
I would like to move approval of the consent agenda.
All right, I second that.
Okay, seconded by Joyce. Roll call.
Mantra, yes.
Article.
Aye.
Capella OI.
Gibson, aye.
Segoshai. Okay. Shifting gears, on to appointments.
I move that we appoint Diane Magariaga, Magariaga, as a trust, library trustee alternate.
Second. Roll call.
Mantra, aye.
I, I think we need to amend that so that we include the term expiring. Could we do that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you are, sir.
Whatever that date is. Yeah, expiring March 2025.
Okay, I'd, I'd second that amended.
Okay, roll call.
Mantra, aye.
Aye.
Capella, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Segoshai. On to did it, did it, staff report.
Okay, swiftly, November, our work anniversary is first meeting in November. John Janelle was, joined the fire department 26 years ago.
Wow.
Aaron Paradise first started working in the town 16 years ago.
Wow.
Richard Smith joined the fire department 12 years ago. Abigail Clark Recreation eight years ago. Terrence Glazier has been at the transfer station for five years. And Cameron Berry, a full-time police officer for three years.
Wow.
Appreciate tenure of those employees.
Yes, we're very lucky.
The budget development process is still underway. You have a couple of minutes from recent meetings attached to your materials as well as a few updated documents. The process has worked very well. We've had good feedback from the department heads and from the budget committee and look forward to our December 2nd meeting on that. Ayers Lake Boat Launch Improvement Project, we continue to work on permitting. Barrington Center Development Committee Fall Fest was a huge success. Importantly, and you heard it mentioned tonight, we have a survey that was developed by the committee to take the qualitative data collection that we did during concerts and over the summer and make, that informed a quantitative approach where we've developed a survey, we're advertising that, it's in the tax bill insert, will be at the election tomorrow and to, to advise what the next steps of that project will be. Trail and their connectivity stakeholder meeting, they, we have an updated map, which will be showcased at the election tomorrow. And we're looking forward to preparing for the NH cooperative extension downtowns and trails programs.
Speaking of maps, for the information table, we have, the last time, a lot of citizens weren't confused by the town center map. And do we have any other printing options if we're going to have maps on display that maybe has orientation of, they always want to know where's Calis in this map? And it's like, it's a little hard to tell.
We'll have to use some stickers.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
So we have maps.
It probably gets the, the part, well, the old schemes, right? The old schemes, like the old layouts.
Oh, right.
The preliminaries showing like the.
Remember, we had ideas just so people could conceptualize.
Oh, for Barrington Common. Yeah, yeah, I think Rob's talking about the big map of all of Barrington, but it's just so big that you don't have detail?
No, no, no.
Or you are talking about Barrington Common? Oh, okay, okay, okay.
They couldn't get oriented to where Calis was and where.
Something that we didn't print, but is, is on the first page of the survey, is, we've talked to the BCDC about how there's a general confusion about the town center and the Barrington Common and what is what and what it means. And so what we did is we just took a satellite view of Barrington with some of the businesses in the community flag and drew a green circle around it and put some hashing and said that this green circle is the approximate extent of the town center. And then highlighted the Barrington Common property, that 13 acres in yellow, and said that this yellow is the Barrington Common property. So you could see the two in relation. What I'm hearing is maybe it'd be valuable to have something like that available. I mean, it's in the survey, it's the first page of the survey, so we can, you know, have that pulled up, that we'll have a couple of iPads there, so.
I mean, I've seen other maps in town that, that have oriented, easier to read.
Better.
So just whatever we brought last time.
To, I forget whose point that maybe, maybe, who made the point. But because we're kind of going to that next level of the survey and the specific details, I don't think we're going to be relying on those conceptuals as much now. We'll, we'll develop additional conceptuals after.
But do you, are you saying you think people don't even sort of know where the 13 acres are?
Yeah, or when you were showing them the map, they couldn't figure out where was Route 9, where was Calis? It was, it was too zoomed in. It didn't have enough perspective. And so maybe actually what you're talking about, that image in the survey, if there was a way to kind of print that out, just for like.
And, and maybe do a red outline of the trail.
Some say that green circle has the same circular shape as a rat trap cheese cover.
Whoa, you're really.
And why not?
Okay. State Representative Candidate Forum, we had a candidate forum. If you have questions, the link to that video is available in the Town Administrator Report.
Yeah, thanks for putting the link in there.
I won't go through the updates to strategic planning goals. And we had a few members participate in NHMA conference and a few staff members, a lot that was learned if you have notes. And Joyce, I know, just sent me a presentation today, but if you have items that you want to bring forward to the entire select board, just let me know and we'll probably be trickling in some things from staff as well. So more to come on that. Legislative changes to write to no law webinar upcoming. I would really like to encourage any select board member that's available to consider attending the Municipal Land Use Law Conference. The select board in its strategic planning approach has identified that land use law and land use regulations in Barrington, you know, overlap a lot with what the, the select board has identified as priorities for the community. The more we all know about what guardrails exist in municipal law or land use law in New Hampshire and what we kind of can't do is, is really important. So if you're available, I'd encourage you to look at that.
It's on a Saturday in person?
Yes.
Is there any chance that we can ask them to tape that?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's being recorded.
That's the unfortunate part, a Saturday, an hour away.
There are a lot.
She said she's going to go in and film it for us, just so we know she's coming.
That's not what I agreed to. I just, it would be really helpful.
The same topics are covered in smaller webinars and there's a webinar archive. So you, so that information is available recorded. I just don't think that they're planning to record that.
I would say that I've probably seen the majority of.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Okay, MOA Cottle, it looks like we're all set this evening.
Justin Othel Office for the appointment.
Okay. Okay, all right, on to old business. Okay, nothing on the old business, on to new business, nothing on the new business, on to select board reports. But before we dive in, just to confirm scheduling tomorrow for tomorrow's election, I will have the early morning into, into mid, midday with Tracy.
I could do 10:00 AM to 12:30.
Yep, and then we have Robin Joyce. And then you're in the evening till your meeting-ish for school board, is it?
Now, yeah, I can do the school board at 6:00, but I, I thought I was on at 2:00.
Yes.
Okay.
And I can return in the evening. I tend to throw a text out and just say, do you need me? And, and it may be very busy.
I'm there through the evening. Noon through. I think they canceled that school board meeting, so.
And I can come back around 5:00.
I believe we're covered.
Great.
Okay.
So I'm going to throw you a text and just say, do you need me to come hand count ballots? Do you need?
You're just going to come down and be joyous, like you always are.
Very joyous.
All right, select board reports.
Yeah, I make the ABC meeting last Tuesday, but there's a minutes that are in the, should have come up in your feed today from Connor. School board meeting, school board really starting to go through their budget. It's an interesting process that they go through. They have, it's all by numbers and, and they don't tell what the numbers are except for the, for the school board numbers. They're mostly about their instructional things and the most of these are contracted, so there's not a lot of movement in these.
What do you mean by the numbers?
Well, they, they go down.
Line items?
They're line numbers. And they're all very specific about a particular program in the, so you have to, and they don't, I don't know where it's published, frankly. I'm supposed to get a packet, but I don't know where the packet is, just think they work right off their budget, budget binders. It's a little, there's, ABC was present at the meeting, a little more transparent than it has been in the past.
Excellent. Third person, Hidakoff.
So zoning has an administrative appeal case coming up, I think in two weeks or a week and a half, at New Hampshire Municipal Association. The three sessions that I attended that day included cemeteries, which was fascinating, and green burial, and the need for reviewing our municipal requirements within our cemeteries and adopting a plan for green burial, should we be doing that. I took a session on fire leadership and it was very clear based on the session that the idea of regionalization is not being embraced in any large capacity. And the other session I took was on civility with the upcoming elections and how to approach civility in any manner when we have differences with people and we're trying to be election officials, keep things as transparent and adhere to all of our election laws. So very good sessions.
I haven't had planning board since last meeting. The session that I was most interested in Thursday was around highways. So many of the communities have not moved to what we're doing. So they're fixing their worst roads every year. They identify their worst roads and fix that. Where our new road plan over the last five years is to work on maintaining what we have, so maintaining the good roads. And then the bad roads sort of fall to the bottom, which was why we haven't attended to, say, Dear Ridge Road yet. But that in terms of financial impact, it makes so much sense to maintain the good roads and put the bulk of your money there. They had a little Excel spreadsheet and they worked with average of a town having 50 miles. Now, we have 80, but this was just the average of a lot of small towns. And using that calculation and how to maintain all those roads, we should all be spending about a million dollars a year. Now, there was no one in the room who could budget for that kind of money, but just looking at the cost of roads and how to keep ahead of, of it all.
Very interesting.
And very expensive.
Let's start buying Jeeps.
Yeah. Vice Chair.
Conservation Met on the 24th, I was not able to attend. They reviewed about six proposals that are before the planning board that I don't think they had any major comments or concerns, just some minor comments back. And they will have a table at the voting tomorrow, as will the energy committee. And hopefully, I think those tables are going to be nearby our table because I might step in if they have to.
Absolutely.
Or something, so.
Excellent. My boards have been busy, trails, BCDC. We just had Fall Fest, about 2,500 people, you'd say?
Whoa.
Tons of families, kids, smiles, you name it. I also attended HMA, was there early for the voting, for the board members, had a couple exercises about talking with, you know, people from the town and how to deal with different personalities, we'll say, and all I have, so.
We walked the pumpkin trails you helped create with Matt. They were amazing.
Thank you.
It's, and I didn't mention this, but it wasn't at the meeting, but library's having a book sale too tomorrow.
Oh, fun, as usual.
As usual, as usual.
It will be more because they're really weaning down their, the amount of books that they're taking to the new building.
Okay.
So, so at the chamber event, which honored, you know, our, Gwen Moore at the thrift shop and then Roger Gendry, who's president of the foundation, but the centerpieces were books at different angles and some other things. And then people took the books. So I thought that was very smart. They got rid of a couple dozen books.
And the theme was, because they honored the business of new and again thrift, and then they honored the library, which is being new again. They, that was the theme of the event. It was, it was very well done.
Awesome. Okay, going to go ahead, open up the last and final public comment session. No one is in studio, so I do not see anybody online with their hand raised, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. No need for non-public, so I will entertain.
Can I move for adjournment?
Second.
Oh. Second. Hidakoff, aye.
Capella, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Segoshai. Thank you, have a good night.